Hello.
Hey, Melody, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Jim. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, June 20th, meeting of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. We have a quorum, and Craig will be joining us in just a few minutes, so everybody will be here. Let me start with the confirmation of a modification of the posted meeting agenda. I don't know of any but any changes, Jim. Do you have any changes, or Gretchen?
Nope.
Okay, so the meeting will proceed as posted. You've all received the meeting notes from Jim. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the meeting notes?
So moved, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please.
Second, Sean.
Thanks, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Objection, the motion carries. You've all had a chance, I hope, to review the June 6 minutes. Has anyone observed any changes or corrections they'd like to make? None? Okay, how could I have a motion to approve the June 6 minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you, Michael. Is that Sean seconding?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Objection, the motion carries. Correspondents and announcements. Jim, Gretchen, do you have anything?
No.
I think the only thing I would note here is that you'll notice that we are meeting virtually again. It was kind of a last minute decision by the governor to extend, extend this period, and I've forgotten the date now, Gretchen and Jim, when will we be going virtual until?
I believe the date was July 14th.
Yeah, okay. I do have one thing, Melody.
Yes.
The sexual harassment training and the PESH training, which is the safety stuff, has to be done, and I believe I forwarded it to everybody, but I can do that again tomorrow.
I don't recall seeing it, but-
It would have been a while ago.
Oh, okay. Well, yes.
They have classes until August, so.
I assume they're online again as before?
I believe so.
Okay, I would assume they would have to be if we're not having in-person meetings, so. Okay, and then I was just saying the meeting notification for virtual, both for planning board members and for the public, so they can expect all our meetings to remain as is until at least July 14th, and then we'll see where it goes. All right, we can begin with new applications. We have only one to hear from this evening. That is Carmine De Gennaro, 5 Morton Road. It's a proposed something. I don't see what it is actually on the agenda, but. Who is here?
Car garage.
Okay, who's here representing Mr. Gennaro?
He is representing himself.
Okay. Well, then we'll turn it over to you and ask you to explain to the planning board what you would like to do.
I'm being asked by Zoom to start my video. Is that? Oh, sorry, my camera's on.
There you are.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, so I've recently married. My wife is moving here tomorrow, and we have the urgent need for more storage. That said, it has been my intention to rebuild this garage for pretty much since I moved here. It's pretty dilapidated, dirt floor, single car garage, rodent infested, can't really even keep electrical tools in that structure. Actually, the mice ate through my lawnmower, my ride-on mower, and ruined it last year, so. Because we're combining households, we have some additional funds, and we thought we would rebuild this because we do have like this need for storage especially. Essentially, that's that's kind of it. If you if you if you've looked at the property or have ever driven by, there's ample space enough, I think, for a secondary structure there. In fact, just standing in the driveway, it kind of looks like something's missing. But I'm not sure if the planning board has any intentions of coming out here to see it for themselves. I know they've been here before. It's kind of it in a nutshell. We do have three children. We're combining our families and have a blended family, four-year-old, seven-year-old, and a 15-year-old, and the thing that kind of unites them is ping pong. And we thought, if there's any possible way we could put that in the garage bays or in the storage area upstairs, there would be an added bonus. I don't know if there's much else to say here aside from that.
Oh, Jim, were there other elevations as part of the package? I'm trying to remember.
There were for the pre-conference, Melody, but we just got the one for the official submission, the one that's on the screen right now.
Oh, okay. Am I remembering that you had a door at the back of this garage?
Yes.
You know, is that shown on the sketch plan prior to this?
Yeah, it should be in the plan itself. Yeah, so our idea is to actually have some more space in the back of this for, you know, building or fixing things, kind of like a workshop area behind the garage, behind the bays where the garage would be. And I think Sarah mentioned on our last call that potentially the upstairs might be too small to have any kind of like recreation or this this sort of headroom for ping pong, which is why she wanted this double door on the side going into the garage bays. I'm not a fan of it personally, but.
Compromise is always a good thing.
In a new marriage, yeah.
In any marriage. It doesn't have to be new.
Sorry, thanks for the reminder.
Okay, all right. Jim, do you have any comments on this application?
I had a couple, mostly just for the planning boards, you know, thoughts. So the garage that's proposed now, bring the site plan back up. As you can see, it's quite a bit larger than the one that is is there now. I just wanted to let everyone know that. We are in the Rhine Cliff overlay, so the setbacks obviously can be, you know, looked at within the context of the area. There are no specific setbacks per se. But I did just want to make sure that everyone was aware that what's being put back in, or what is proposed to be put in is significantly larger than what's there now. I think that's important for when you go out for the site visit, just so you can kind of put that into context and come back and kind of let everyone know what's going on. I thought, and I guess I want to ask the applicant, and here the the garage sketch is kind of shown to go all the way to the edge of the existing blacktop garage. In the rendering here, it didn't seem like it did. I just wanted to kind of get a clarification on where you think the placement is. You know, is the rendering really kind of showing what's where it's actually going to be in the size, or is there some discrepancy here?
I think, yeah, I think David, the architect, was having a little trouble with the kind of depth here. But yeah, if you looked at the property, you would see that like the driveway is quite large, like it's actually, I think, even bigger than the proposed structure by maybe a foot or so. It is, it was in his opinion, and we kind of agreed with him that moving the structure up a little bit might make sense. There's there's quite a bit of sort of area on that side of the property. Again, if you, there used to be a beautiful tree there, and since its absence, the it looks quite bare, and we thought we'd capitalize on that and move it up forward to be a little bit further away from our neighbors in the back, though their house is quite a distance from that property line.
Yes, but but the intent is for the garage essentially fill that that driveway area, so the rendering might might be off by a little. I mean, it's intended to kind of show the example, but it would it would kind of fill in over here if it's going to be the full driveway width.
Yeah, I, I, oh, I guess I see what you're saying. Yeah, I suppose so.
Okay.
Then, you know, that driveway, the width of that driveway, can I see that site plan once again?
Yeah, so here the the building goes all the way to what's shown at the edge of the the blacktop. It just wasn't shown in the rendering, so I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on what we're talking about.
I think it's worth looking at, you know, if you're doing a site visit.
And that that kind of brings me to my other comment that I have. I know my dimensions aren't here, so I guess the planning board can discuss it, but there were no dimensions of the actual kind of square shown on the site plan here. I know they are on the second page. So we do have the dimensions shown on the second page here, and I did ask CJ at the pre-con if we could stake out the edges where we think that this structure would be when when you do go out for a site visit, again, to help kind of put it all into context, so.
Done that, yeah, we done that, and I neglected to take a photo of it.
No, that's okay. So, you know, planning board members will be coming out to do this. So I think that'll help. I mean, like I say, we do have the dimensions on here on page two of the site plan. Typically, we do like to see those on on this first page as well, so that it is recorded properly. So there's that. I guess the only other question that I had, and it's just for my knowledge, there's a treehouse shown in this picture that I don't remember seeing in a previous renderings. Is that that existing? That's not rendered in, right?
That exists. David suggested removing that tree because it would probably not survive the construction of this. So we're kind of planning on doing that.
Oh, so this, you think the tree will come down?
His his thought that it was that it won't survive, that he thinks like, I don't know enough about trees and enough to know, but it was his thought, and my my wife is from Westchester, so her tendency is to cut down trees, though I would like to preserve it. If I have no problem with that treehouse coming down, by the way, my son has grown out of it, and.
I was just curious. I want to make sure it wasn't kind of rendered in. That's all. So if it's existing, then it's existing. But I do think if there's a discussion of the tree coming down, it is a pretty large tree, so that will be something for the planning board to consider, and that kind of gets me to my last comment, just that there was the large tree. Just wanted to see how this actually fits into the, you know, how the building fits into the context of what's there with that tree and whether or not it would have to come down. They did think the rendering was off by a little bit from what's actually shown on the site.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think that, you know, I think that kind of takes care of my comments, Melody. I think this field visit will help, you know, clarify a couple of these questions.
Okay, questions or comments from planning board members?
It's Craig.
Hi, Craig.
Is, are the garage bays deep enough to actually put a car? It looks like the staircase is pretty much in the middle or pretty close to the middle.
That's a great question. What, where are these? I, David's pretty good. I think he he's accounted for that. I can't see the actual depth here. It's 19.
It's 19 and a half feet.
Yeah, minus.
15.
Four or three and a half or four, so. So it'd be about 15 or 14 feet.
Okay. You get many in there.
Yes, because we type fit depending on the car.
I have a VW Golf, I guess.
Well, it might be something you want to verify.
Yeah.
If there need to be any changes made, you'd have time to do it. Okay, any other comments, planning board members?
The only other comment I have is around lighting. I do see it now. Okay, never mind.
I have a quick question, actually, on the back of Craig's question, and Melody, your comment is what is the next phase here? I mean, if say David does need to move this staircase and this sort of support wall back, does the planning board come out and do a site visit, assess like the overall size of this and then recommend changes, or?
Well, we're going to do, we're going to, in just a minute, we're going to do a draft resolution, and we'll assign people to come and do a site visit. It would be obviously helpful for you to clarify with with your architect before they come out, with the things that you, you know, we're talking about, the trees, and I certainly want you to be looking at the condition of the tree that you think might come down and those sorts of things, so you can answer any questions they might have in the field, and then if you need to make modifications, we can do that and proceed.
That sounds great. Should I make a few notes of this, or will, I mean, I, there's the the depth of the garage, the tree itself with the treehouse, and it's by the, yeah, it's likelihood of remaining, and was there a third?
Well, you want to be staking out the exact dimensions of the proposed garage, so that when the people make the site visit, they'll see the size and how it aligns with the blacktop driveway.
Right, okay.
I think that's everything. Did I miss something, Jim?
Oh, I think that that covers it.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so Jim, we have a procedural resolution.
Yes, we do. The procedure resolution is for site plan special use permit for construction of, well, replacement of a garage, if newer larger garage, possible recreation space above it at 5 Morton Road. Planning board is asked to accept the application and supporting documents adequate for further review. Classify the proposed actions type two under seeker, schedule a public hearing for Gretchen, be July.
July 18th.
April, July 18th, 6:15. We will forward this on to the CAB for their review. We'll forward it on to the WAC for their review. Although it's not listed as a historic property, it is an older structure, so I do think HAPAC should take a quick look at this. It also is within the historic district, so they should get a look at it as well, and we need to delegate planning board members for a site visit.
Would like to go. Craig, I'll go with Craig. All right, could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
Don't move, Delise.
Thanks, Delise. Second, please.
Second, Sean.
Thanks, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. We will be in touch with you to schedule a site visit.
Perfect. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too, thanks.
6:15. Let's begin the public hearings for this evening. The first up is Nora Brackus, 9 Williams Street, site plan and special use permit for proposed addition. I see Nora is here. Nora, is there someone else with you that's going to present this evening?
I'm on duty. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, it's taking a little while.
Steve Cornish, he's here also, the contractor, and our engineer, Tim Lynch, should be present also.
Okay, would you like to briefly report to us what you would like to do here? Yes.
Go ahead, Nora.
No, no, you go.
Well, the the proposed addition on the north side of the house is for a master bedroom and bathroom to be located at the first floor, same ground level as the existing house, which used to be the the carport right next door.
Okay. Jim, comments?
I don't have anything new since last time. We have all the renderings and mainly just looking for comments from members who went out to the site visit.
Okay, so I'll ask for that now.
And I did the site visit.
Okay, and I believe you had other people with you. Is that correct?
Yes, we did. We had a representative from HAPAC, and I believe we also have a representative from the CAB.
And am I correct, Gretchen, that we've gotten written reports from both HAPAC and the CAB on this?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll let Michael report, and then you can just fill us in on the on the reports from HAPAC and CAB. So, Michael and Edna, I don't know who wants to go first.
Edna, would you like to begin?
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, we went out to look. It's a, it's a very typical Rhine Cliff lot, you know, very small, nicely landscaped, everything, you know, very close and tight in there, the buildings around and whatnot. This obviously is, you know, going to be right up against the property line. It's going to be in a corner of the property now, which is a small little garden area. What he was referring to as the garage before is the park piece of the house, which is this is what we attached to was the garage, and that's now been living space. Yes, that's living space now. This is going to be a master bedroom. They're not expanding the number of bedrooms on the property. They're going to integrate it into the house, similar siding, window treatments, single story. If for Rhine Cliff, it fits in very nicely. They've, the house is very nicely maintained. I think it'll fit in. I think it's a, I think it's sort of a good Rhine Cliff addition. I don't see any problems with it.
Thank you, Michael. Edna?
Yeah, Jim, could you go back to the floor plan? Yeah. It's the one on the right. You're you're looking at the, I think, current condition. Yeah, this one. The question that I have is, as Michael said, the bedroom is going very close to the lot line, and there is a a fence there that has some vegetation on it, and there are some other plantings there. I'm wondering if you can tell me how close that is going to be to the to the fence, to the, what is essentially the lot line?
Steve, can you answer that?
Yes, I can. The, we will be two feet off the property line. The fence itself is about six inches onto the Brackus's property. So we'll be about a foot and a half away from that fence, and our full attention is to leave that fence as the as the detail on that property line. So there are no plans to remove that fence. If we have to during construction, then it will be reinstalled.
And how will you be coming at the site? I assume that you will not be coming from Kelly Street, but will be coming around the building to get at that site?
Most likely, I envision the most of the excavation happening from Kelly Street, since we are so close to the street.
Right, but isn't there a lot of, aren't there plantings there that would have to be removed to go through there?
Yes, the plantings are going to have to be removed on Kelly Street anyway, because they are right where the addition is going to be proposed to be built. So I believe they are, I'm not sure what, do you know what they are, Nora?
They're some kind of hedge. What's the hedge over on that side?
Yeah, there's a hedge that serves as a divider or blocking the street, but it's going to come down, I believe you said.
Yeah, I believe they're lilacs, but yeah, those lilacs are right where the the addition.
They're not lilacs. Bushes, they're just bushes. Yeah.
Well, we will be planting, you know, in front of this, but the those tall bushes or shrubs that are there will be removed.
So you'll be planting along Kelly Street? Is that the plan?
Yeah.
After the
Yeah.
is built.
But it'll be much smaller, smaller plant.
Right. And then the the deck itself also, we keep going back to this, which I think is an earlier drawing, because the deck extends further out, doesn't it?
It does extend, yeah, it does extend further out than the existing deck, so they have access from the bedroom to the to the rear deck, but is totally secluded from both Williams and Kelly Street. So the deck itself is, you know, it's kind of tucked into that corner behind the addition.
Right, but it extends further out than this drawing that we're looking at here.
Yes, if you look at the floor plan, I think the deck is is dimensioned or on the floor plan.
So the floor plan dimensions don't match the plans that we just looked at in terms of the dimensions?
Yes, they do, but if you see the deck on the first floor plan, number three, you can see that deck compared to the existing deck on plan number one, yes.
Right, we've just been looking at the wrong drawing, that's all.
Yes.
I don't have any other comments.
Thank you, Edna. Anyone else from the planning board have questions or comments? Gretchen, can you quickly summarize the two reports, HAPAC and CAB?
Neither of them had any issues.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here from public, Jim, who would like to make a comment?
So please unmute your line. Raise your hand. Not seeing anyone, Melody.
All right, could I then have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second. Thank you, Craig. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, hearing none, public hearing is closed. Jim, we have a approval resolution?
A new approval resolution for the planning board's consideration reaffirming the action is type two under seeker based upon the submitted information, including reports from planning board members, HAPAC, CAB, WAC, finding that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125 with respect to the application for special use permits authorizing work, asking the planning board to find the proposed work and intended uses consistent with the general standards for special use permits, and to grant the request of special use permit conditioned upon receipt of site plan approval. With respect to the application for site plan approval, asking the board to to find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with chap, town code, chapter 125, section 12575, and approve the application inclusive of materials and plans, that's a typo, which I will fix later on, the plans as submitted. Apologize for that.
All right, could I have a motion to approve the draft procedural resolution?
So moved, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please. Thanks, Sean. That's second. Let me poll the board. Michael?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sean? Joe?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Motion carries. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next public hearing, Wendy Maitland, 636 River Road, site plan review and the installation of a pool. All right. Who is here representing the Maitland application? Is there anyone here to speak to the Maitland application?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, yes, this is Chris Schmidt with Need Group.
Okay, Chris, would you like to tell us what you're proposing to do here?
Sure, sorry about that. Computer issues here. Yeah, so we are going to be installing an in-ground gunnet pool at the Maitland's property. It is located behind an existing garage. If we could zoom in here, that'd be great. Thank you. So the plan is to put an 18 by 36 pool in there, about 648 square feet, and we have the existing, or sorry, a proposed patio going around the pool on the two sides, as you see there. We've already received a variance from the zoning board due to the setback issues in regards to the location. This was the only spot on the property where we were able to locate the pool. It's in the rear yard, hidden from River Road due to topography, as well as mostly hidden from the road with the garage there blocking the view of driveway. We just pulled up some site photos there where we had painted out the pool back during the winter, the location. And the second page of the application just shows the fence style that we're planning to use, which is a paddock style with a wire mesh to make it pool code.
Okay. Jim, comments?
No, Melody didn't really have any issues first time around. I think it all looked pretty good. No, no, no new issues.
Okay, site visit. Who conducted the site visit? Chris, was, did anyone schedule a site visit with you?
No, they did not. So I wasn't aware, maybe they went without myself being. No, they did not. Um, so I wasn't aware, maybe they went, uh, without myself being there, um, but I'm not sure if the site was completed.
Okay, well somehow some of us dropped the ball. It could be me, for all I know, but, um, I'm not sure the site visit would have changed anything and I don't think we need to hold this up lacking a site visit. Does anybody disagree with me?
It helps at all. I have been to that property when it was on the market. Um, and I do, I do very much remember it, so I can comment based on that if that's helpful at all. Um, I know, you know, it's, it seems well allocated with the house and there's also like a little guest house barn back there. Um, you know, it's, although there's some visibility from the road, it's generally pretty well set back. And the, the land is very flat with no visible wetlands, so I don't think there's any concern for like runoff or anything like that. Um, I know it's not exactly a site plan visit, but I hope that helps at all.
The next best thing.
And you said there's a guest house there. Is that detailed, Jim, on the application?
Uh, I don't believe it's a guest house. There is the barn, um, I'm sorry, the garage and there's a, a small like storage room in the back of it.
There, there was, you have the, the garage closer to the road than the main house. And then there was a little living space, because it was being rented at the time that I saw it, so it was definitely a habitable structure.
The, there isn't, a- as far as I am aware, are you, are you saying that the, the guest house is in the garage?
Can we go, um, exist, yeah? Is that the garage I'm looking at there?
Yes.
Yeah, this is the garage.
It's the garage. So where's the street in relationship to this?
It's out in front.
Oh, wow.
On the side here. It's the corner lot.
It was, you know, with, maybe I could pull up the lot line actually while I'm talking. Remind me the exact address?
Uh, six thirty-six River Road.
Unless I'm River, unless I'm imagining the neighboring property with the guest house, so.
Cool.
It's the, it's the corner of, um, is that Upper Hook?
And River.
Upper Hook, yeah, okay. Um, all right, well, if there's no guest house, there's no guest house. That was my recollection.
Okay.
So I'll still look at these lot lines as I, as you talk.
All right, um, any questions or comments from planning board members? All right, Jim, is there anyone here from the public?
Uh, so again, please unmute your line or raise your hand. Don't see anyone, Melody.
Okay. Um, Delise, all right.
Hmm. Um, yeah, I think, you know, I, I I don't, you know, there's nothing that I can offer that would, that would indicate any foreseeable issues, so I can definitely say that, if that's helpful at all.
Okay. Um, could I have a motion then to close the public hearing? So, second. Motion second, all those, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
I just asked something. Was there not a AIPAC, um, report on this? Or not, or not?
Yes, there was. Sorry.
Okay, Gretchen, uh, did AIPAC find any issues?
I gotta look it up. I don't have it on me.
Let's see if I.
Yeah, the H pack came back with, uh, no issues.
Okay.
There is a, a form that Gretchen emailed, uh, last week or week before, I believe. You can pull it up.
Okay.
No issues.
Okay. Um, so I think I have a motion in the second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions, the motion carries. Uh, Jim, Jim, you have an approval resolution?
Yes, we do. Um, approval resolution for the planning board's consideration, uh, for construction of the pool and patio, six thirty-six River Road. Reaffirming the action is type two under seeker. Uh, based upon submitted information for planning board members, CAB and AIPAC, finding the proposed work consistent with objectives and regulations of chapter one, two, five. And with respect to the application for site plan approval, finding the proposed work and intended use consistent with chapter one, two, five, section one, two, five, seven, five. Improve the application inclusive of the materials and plans by need group, uh, last dated April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Authorizing planning board chair to stamp and sign the site plan on the applicant satisfaction of the three conditions below within six calendar months of the adoption of the resolution.
Okay, could I have a motion to adopt the draft approval resolution?
So moved, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second. Thank, thank you, Sean. Uh, I'll pull the board. Craig?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
All right, thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Uh, next up, under new applications, Funderleth, oh, excuse me, public hearings, reading the wrong line, Funderleth four ten White School House Road Site Plan and Special Use Permit Mining and Reclamation Renewal. Jim?
Yeah, Melody, um, my, my recommendation, based on some discussion with John Lyons, is that we continue the public hearing until next month, uh, to clear up one, one or two more items. Um, I've been working with John on, on this and all the discussions related to White School House Road. So if I could get that continued, I think John and I should be able to hopefully, um, iron out these last couple wrinkles and get this back on the, uh, docket for discussion.
And I believe we've conveyed that recommendation to Mark Reminsky, who represents Funderleth, and he's in agreement.
Yes, I let him know and he said that he understood.
Okay, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please.
Second, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, the motion continues. Uh, Gretchen, to what date would that be?
July eighteenth.
Okay, six fifteen P M. All right, old business. Grassmere House, twenty-nine mil road, site plan, special use permit, wetlands permit, minor subdivision, country into. Jim, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, I don't know. Um, Nick, did you want to just give a quick update on things and then I'll take it from there? Do you have a couple updates?
Sure, thank you, Jim. Good evening, good evening, everyone. This is Ward Willis with Keen and Bean on behalf of the applicant Soho House, also joined tonight by Tom LaRue on behalf of Soho House and John Montaigne from GPI. Just a brief update, on June sixth, we've submitted, um, revised plans responsive to comments received from the planning board from CPL and from, um, Jim's office. Uh, we also submitted a response letter to CPL's comments. And then on June fourteenth, we appeared before the Village of Rhinebeck, um, Board of Trustees, at which meeting they discussed and authorized the mayor to execute an agreement between Grassmere and the village to provide water to the Grassmere House project. They also authorized the mayor to work with the engineers to submit that application to the Department of Health for their review and approval of those plans. So we're very pleased with that and, um, appreciate the villagers' work on that matter. And we'll be working with, um, Brandy Nelson at the village to, um, finalize those plans. The Department of Health did previously submit conceptual approval for the water project portion of the plan, as well as previously the, uh, wastewater treatment system as well. And then on June fifteenth, we had a meeting at Village Hall with, uh, a number of people, including CPL, really an engineers meeting to go through and, um, discuss the technical comments that John Montaigne with GPI and Joshua Connor from GPI discussed with, uh, Christian Moore from CPL. And those are our updates.
Actually, Nick, the meeting was at Town Hall.
Thank you.
Not, not to confuse the village and the town, but because you're dealing with both of us on different issues, I just wanted to clarify that.
Appreciate it.
Um, anything else? All right, um, Jim, would you like to update us on where you think we are?
Yep, so, um, as everyone knows, we, we spent quite a bit of time, uh, going through the environmental assessment forms. Um, we talked about part two, went through it in detail. I have provided you with the draft copy of the part two. Go through really quickly, uh, item one, you know, again, after all the discussion that we had, uh, the resulting findings was there was no impact on land, no impact on geological features, no impact on surface water, uh, no impact on groundwater, no impact on flooding, no impact on air, no impact on plants and animals, or I should say no, or small impact, to, to follow the terminology. Uh, no or small impact on agricultural resources, no or small impact on aesthetic resources for the impact on historic and archaeological resources, um, or did find that potentially a moderate to large impact may occur, and I will come back to that second uh, on, on items A, B, and C. Uh, no impact on open space and recreation, uh, no impact on critical environmental areas, there actually aren't any in the town. Uh, no or small impact on transportation, no or small impact on energy, no or small impact on noise, odor, and light, and no or small impact on human health, consistency with community plans and consistency with community character. So with that, I went forward and drafted for you, uh, a part three, which essentially is a write-up version of all the discussion that we had. Uh, we included an introduction, a list of, um, the best majority of the documents that were submitted. Overall finding summary and conclusion. And then I provided you with what I thought was the appropriate analysis and conclusion for each of those questions, um, so that it backs up the findings on the part two. I am not going to read all this. I'm not going to go through all of it. Uh, but in the end, um, what I did come up with was that the, um, determination of significance conclusion is that the proposed country into does not result in a moderate significant impact on the community. Much of the property is to remain untouched as part of the project. Some of the work being done will preserve and actually enhance the current deteriorating historic structures and, and properties. For the sub-care categories found to have moderate to large impact, which are just those three subcategories, uh, related to store preservation. Planning board found the impacts are not significant or proposed to be mitigated to the maximum extent practical and have been adequately addressed. Uh, therefore, uh, my writing, my write-up is that the planning board found that there's no additional environmental study or assessment needed for the project, and I was recommending that you issue a negative declaration or determination of non-significance for the seeker. So I guess what I'm asking for tonight is, um, to, if, if planning board is, is willing and, and, um, thinks we're at that point, to essentially approve the neck deck for seeker, and I'd have drafted a resolution for that.
Planning board members, um, having reviewed, I hope all of Jim's prepared, including this EAF part three. Do you have any additional comments or questions you'd like to add at this time? Uh, can, can I assume by your silence that, uh, you agree with Jim's conclusion? That which we just saw at the end, yes. Then you have the, we have the resolution up? Yeah, so here is.
Going to it, here we go.
So here's the draft seeker resolution, Jim. Um, I think this warrants you reading through it. This has been a long project and a long journey, so let's, let's celebrate it a little bit by reading the whole resolution.
Okay, so, um, what we're asking the planning board tonight is to, uh, approve the seeker resolution. This proposed action is seeking site plan wetlands permit subdivision special use permit approval from the planning board. Grassmere House is proposing a country and two project, which includes construction of several buildings, roads, parking areas, wastewater treatment plant, upgraded municipal water pipelines and associated site improvements. The town but, planning board in its role is duly established lead agency under seeker and upon review and completion of FEAF parts two and three hereby act as follows in consideration of the environmental significance of the pro-site plan for Grassmere House at twenty-nine mil road, Rhinebeck, New York, within the town of Rhinebeck, RA ten, rural agricultural zoning district, local waterfront revitalization area, Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, the state's district scenic area of statewide significance, and along a scenic, along a scenic road, mil road. Uh, the planning board is asked to adopt the annexed full EAF form part three, evaluation of the magnitude and importance of project impacts and determination of significance, which document each of the potentially moderate to large impacts identified upon review of the, uh, applicants for the EAF part one and the planning board completion of the EAF part two, which is what we did over the last several meetings. And in doing so, provided the reasons in support of the planning board's determination that this project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore issues of negative declaration, determination of non-significance, under seeker deeming an environmental impact statement not be required, and stating such will not be prepared. Planning board is asked to authorize the chair to sign full VAF form part three, evaluation of magnitude and importance of project impacts and determination of significance and cause in accordance with part six seventeen dot one, two, N Y C R R. Its publication in the environmental notice bulletin, distribution to the town supervisor, the applicant, and all other involved agencies set forth within the March eighth, twenty twenty-two secretly the agency update. Request for comments, um, I guess it was a memo that was issued by the planning board and maintenance of a copy and documentation of publication, distribution thereof in the planning board's files. In taking this action, the planning board approves the Grassmere House country into proposals submitted under transmitted letter dated February seventh, twenty twenty-two, and subsequently through June twenty twenty-two. In taking the action, the board approves to move the project forward and proposed actions are hereby approved for implementation slash construction. And that would be under the seeker header. Just want to make that clear. We do have a separate approval resolution.
Right. Any questions? Okay, questions, comments? Um, could I have a motion to accept the draft seeker resolution?
So moved, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Edna. Uh, I don't know, do we, uh, pull the board with the seeker resolution or just vote?
After eight years, I think we ought to pull the board. I think you should pull the board.
Okay, I will pull the board. So we have a motion in the second. Michael, would you like to go first?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you very much. Jim, you now have another resolution for us to look at?
There is a mute, uh, yes, I do, and this would actually be the approval resolution for the Grassmere House proposal. Um, this is pretty common, pretty, pretty typical, I should say, as, as to the other ones we've seen. Uh, we're asking the planning board to act on the application by Grassmere House for site plan wetlands permit subdivision special use permit uh, for the, uh, amended site plan for the country into a twenty-nine mil road. Asking the planning board to reaffirm the action is type one seeker, uh, for which coordinated environmental quality review is required. And noting that the board, uh, did adopt a negative declaration just this evening for the proposed action. I will put that date in there. Based upon the review of the information, including reports from planning board members, AIPAC, CAB, WAC, members on the site visits, find the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter one, two, five, one twenty, one eighteen, and one oh one. With respect to the minor subdivision, find the, finds the proposed action is consistent with town code chapter one oh one, uh, and asking the planning board to approve the subdivision is detailed in the minor subdivision plan sheet uh, as prepared by Ostold and Waldorf Land Surveyors. With respect to the application for wetland permit to authorize work, uh, asking the planning board to find the work and intended use is consistent with the requirements for wetland permits as set forth in chapter one twenty and granting the wetland permit conditioned upon, uh, receipt of the site plan approval. With respect to special use permit, finding the proposed work and intended use is consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in chapter one, two, five, and asking the planning board to grant the requested special use permit condition to pro, again, upon receipt of site plan approval. And finally, we, in this, we are asking with respect to the site plan approval for the planning board to find the proposed work and intended use is consistent with town code chapter one, two, fives, uh, and approve the application inclusive of materials and plans by agreement Peterson and others that were originally dated February seventh, twenty twenty-two, as updated through essentially this month, June twenty twenty-two. And authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above site of site plan on the applicant satisfaction of the three typical conditions within six calendar months of adoption of the resolution with one additional resolute, uh, condition that I do want to specifically call out. And that is that, uh, this is a conditional approval, uh, which would be conditioned upon the applicant satisfactorily addressing by providing written confirmation to the planning board chair prior to stamp and signature that all outstanding comments, issues, and concerns raised by the town engineering consultant, which is CPL, the Village of Rhinebeck, Nice Dot, the Just County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, New York State D E C, or any other agency with oversight of the proposal have been addressed. The applicant, um, will also concur that if, uh, the noted conditions are not met, the project will need to be resubmitted to the planning board for review. Uh, essentially, for planning board members, what this is doing is, um, there are a couple outstanding issues, uh, we will provide for a conditional approval. And the town, uh, engineering consultant will be working to finalize those issues when he is essentially satisfied, and he's let Melody know so, and we've got that in writing. And I think that would be the point at which it would be signed and stamped. Any questions?
I'm the only. Have a second?
Second, Michael.
Um, the only thing I would add is to just, um, as Nick, uh, referenced earlier, there was a meeting last week, he said it was basically an engineer's meeting. But the purpose of the meeting was to, um, meet with Christian Moore of C P L, who's working with us on this project and to receive from him after these discussions, um, his confirmation that, uh, he agrees that these are the only things that are outstanding, and he's confident, um, that the application is where it needs to be at this point. So that was the purpose of the meeting, and, and we were satisfied with Christian's review, and the, and I think he was very satisfied as well. So I offer that as support for this. Um, any questions or comments? We have a motion in a second. I will, um, happily poll the board. Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I want to thank everybody for all their hard work on this project, certainly the grassmere team. Nick, you all have done a wonderful job over the last four months bringing it to this point, and planning board members for, um, going through what was a lengthy process, but one that I think was very robust and very healthy and brought us this evening to what I hope to be a very successful conclusion. So we look forward, Nick, to working with you as a move ahead and looking forward to seeing what it's going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody.
Any parting comments from anybody on your team?
Yes, Tom? Melody, thank you very much. This is John.
This is Tom.
Tom, we can hear you, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo your, your comments, Melody of thanking the board. Actually, had our C E O in from London today. We walked the property. We couldn't be more excited to get going and and really save the existing buildings that are there and give it, give it new life for years to come. So look forward to working with you all through the process. Obviously, there's a long road to go to, uh, to finish things off and, and everything else, but couldn't, couldn't be happier, and everybody on our end is absolutely thrilled with kind of how the process went and everybody's patience and excitement that went along with it. So thank you all, and look forward to the next steps.
And Melody, ju- just to add on to Tom's comments, it, we do appreciate the hard work done behind the scenes with Jim and C P L and, uh, and you and Michael and the willingness of the boards on the site visit to meet with us, our conversations with, with HAPAC and the, um, constation advisory board. A good process, and we appreciate the, uh, board members' times and efforts put into reviewing the materials we submitted and working with us. So thank you.
Uh, when you appeared before us in January and laid out the schedule with a hope for approval in June, I think we all, you were a bit mad, um, but here we are, it's Joe, um, we accomplished that goal, so, um, good luck going forward.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Well, look forward to seeing it done.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, um, that concludes, I believe, the, uh, old business portion of the meeting, and now we'll take up the continued discussion of the town board referral on the hamlet. I see some folks here from the team. I see Andy and I saw Ken, um, so I know we have some members here. Um, and, uh, Jim, I think we can, uh, well, let's start with, uh, Andy and, and the team. And then Jim, I think we'll then go on with your comments that you've collected. Is that the way you'd like to approach it?
Yeah, but we can, yeah, that's fine.
Do you have a better way? I'm happy to hear that.
No, no, I, I don't know. We want to read all the comments, but let's, let's start with the team, and then we can, we can discuss the comments.
So we can start with the team, and then I thought it would be useful for you to, um, i- if it, do you expect that at the end of this evening upon, um, confirmation from planning board members that your comments will then be referred back to the town?
Um, I, I was hoping that we, if we were at a point that it was, um, yeah, that everyone is in general agreement, I think, with the com- general comments that are in there, and hopefully I want everyone's read them in advance, we can make some tweaks, but I would make some final tweaks to it. You know, send it out for you to take a quick look at individually, send me back any individual comments, and then get it back to the town board. Um, we don't have to do that, uh, based on our, um, timeline extension until probably the next meeting. Um, so it depends. My, my goal was to try and see where we were today, so that we at least have one more meeting if we need it. Um, so we'll see where we, where we stand, I guess.
Okay, Andy, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. Um, yes, my name is Andy Learn with C P L, as everyone knows, uh, with us tonight is Ken Carney, Sean Carney, Justin Lee from Kearney Realty and Development Corporation, and then Dan Martin from the Housing Partnership Development Corporation. Uh, as we had talked about in previous meetings, we did make a submission, um, on June fifteenth to the town board. Um, that submission included a revised site plan, um, and renderings, uh, as well as a landscape plan. Uh, we also included the archaeological phase one A and one B report, uh, as, uh, and the O P R H B, O P R H P correspondence, um, that, uh, reviewed that and accepted it. Um, and then, as requested, we also submitted some additional, um, hard copies of the previous plan set for, for everyone, uh, for anyone that was needed it, um, so that we should have hard copies of both the current plan set and the previous plan set on, on file at town hall for anyone that, that needs it.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, Andy, the second set has only gone to the town board. They have not referred the second set to us.
Understood. Okay, and that's, yeah, that's the, that's the kind of the quirky part of this process that, you know, we're, we're dealing with. But they are there, um, so the site plan, you know, remains what we, remains pretty much what we've been showing you previously, where we, we tried to increase the green space, um, to try to, um, you know, take into account some of the comments that we've heard, um, the landscaping plan, um, I hope you, I hope that, you know, when you get a chance to see it, you'll, you'll see that, you know, we have a commitment to to really trying to, to make it a nice, a nice development with a lot of plantings and, and trying to make it something that the, the town can be proud of. Um, the, uh, we did have some conversations with the D O T, actually, Ken, Ken had the, had some conversations with the D O T. Um, if he's on, maybe he wants to talk about it. Otherwise, I can kind of summarize it. Kenny, you there?
Sure, yeah. Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, we spoke to, um, uh, senior, uh, management at, at D O T. And they're open to the idea of using, um, the Ryan Cliff Road entrance as a primary, uh, uh, egress and ingress. What they do ask or what they want to see is that both entrances are used and not, uh, one is not deemed or labeled an emergency access. So what it would come down to similar to what you have with the gardens, where you have an entrance off of Ryan Cliff, and you also have an entrance off of Astor Road, and it's really a matter of, uh, convenience, uh, for the occupants, um, uh, to use, uh, you know, as, as I think about it, um, I would think that people who are coming, uh, out of this development and heading either south, uh, on route nine to Southern Duchess, or over to the Deconic, would use Ryan Cliff Road. Um, and then those who are going, um, possibly north into shopping, uh, would use the, uh, the Astor Road. So, um, I believe we will get there with the D O T, uh, the exact specifics, uh, of what would be required. Uh, it appears there, there is a path, um, and I think that, um, I think that's a fair compromise, that they're just looking for, uh, both to be, uh, neither one to be labeled as, uh, emergency access.
Ken, is that on their part? Can you tell if that's a request or a requirement?
Um, that's a great question. I, I, Madam Chair, I did relay the message that, um, it was relayed to me that it was a requirement, uh, from, um, from the town that, uh, you wanted Ryan Cliff Road to be, uh, the primary access. So, um, um, I don't, I think that there, um, I think there is hesitation on the part of the D O T to, uh, to approve a connection, uh, uh, to Ryan Cliff Road, but I think that we've made a compelling case and got them to a point where they're willing to, to look at it this way, uh, as long as we leave the Astor Road entrance as, uh, not labeled an emergency access, but, uh, leave it up to the occupants, uh, and it really, I guess, comes down to, uh, a matter of convenience.
Okay. Uh, Andy, anything else you want to continue to add at this point?
We're still listening to what the comments you may have, um, so we can continue to, you know, develop the product moving forward.
Okay.
I'm sorry that, that the board, uh, was not provided, or you don't have access to some, uh, to our submission of June fifteenth, we did, or respond to your comments of, uh, uh, looking for the renderings of various, uh, angles and, uh, from the rear and photometric and so, so forth. So, uh, hopefully you'll, uh, be able to view those, uh, shortly, but I, I do want to say that we did respond you know, to your comments. We heard you, and we did, uh, engage our consultants to, uh, to produce those materials.
Jim, how would you like, I, I mean, I can open it up to comments from the planning board, but if some of them are going to reflect what you've put in your notes, I'm, I'm a little, um, uncertain about what the best way to proceed is here.
Well, um, yeah, I mean, I guess we can kind of open up. Hopefully, everyone has taken a look at the draft memo I put together, and this is really just consolidating comments from the planning board members, uh, and planning board only. Um, this didn't include any, anyone else. Um, and, and essentially what I did was take the comments that I, that I've received in writing and, uh, put them into a couple categories. So you started out with, with any discussions, um, concerns or questions about existing conditions um, and, and elements related to existing conditions related to slopes and, and the forested prop, you know, land and steep slopes, things like that. Um, I then got into a discussion and kind of group comments about, uh, regarding access ingress, egress, and connectivity. Uh, so this would be both vehicular and, uh, you know, kind of pedestrian bicycle connectivity as well. There were comments about all of those. Uh, then they got into discussions of site layout and design, um, pulled the comments together for those elements, and, you know, had a couple pictures in here, uh, that we received. And then, um, got in discussion about the project, uh, identification, naming convention, um, which I do believe we actually talked about, Kenny talked about that on the HAPAC C A B meeting, uh, they brought that up. And I believe you said you were willing to discuss, um, the naming of the, of the properties, so we can get into that really quickly. Um, then, uh, the last one was just talking about, um, a comment related to workforce housing objectives, uh, ensuring that those are met. And then I summarized my comments at the very end, um, talking about, this, I kind of summarizing what was up above, but since I put them out there publicly, I wanted to include a minute's memo as well. And then we had, um, a list of other developments, uh, that were submitted, so that everybody can kind of see a summary of, of what's out there. So I guess, I don't know, Melody, we just opened up for comment or questions?
I have one question. I, I have one question. Where Aster Drive meets the road on the east, where Aster Drive enters on the east side. Not, not on River Road, but on, is it Montgomery Street still there? That portion of Aster Drive is in the village, is it not?
Yes.
Um, the only thing I would offer is that, um, I have, I, I have, um, had some conversations with village representatives who I just would be remiss if I didn't share that their opposition to traffic on Aster Drive coming into the village, it, that they also have the same worries and concerns that have been expressed by the town. So I, I just wanted to make clear that, you know, it isn't just a town road there, that part of it comes directly into the village and comments from the village probably would be very relevant as well. I, I think you, Jim, and Michael, you would agree, would you not?
Yeah. I, I think I'd, I'd even go a little further, Melody, in that the initial, uh, connection is with Wells Manor Lane, which, quite frankly, is a driveway to a specific project. It's not even a town or village road. And to me, we're really suggesting that a driveway is going to be the access point for a eighty-unit, uh, apartment, apartment complex, like, for country and two, what we just proved, it had to be on a county or state road. For anything of any significance or size, we've always designated county or state road, at the very least, a town road, not a driveway. I just, the, the very thought of doing that goes against every, every conceivable condition we've ever placed on projects in terms of access. Uh, I don't believe that that's, I, I think that's a non-starter. And I know that many other people have expressed that as well, including members of the town board.
Okay, well, I think, I, I know Jim has certainly adequately covered it, but I didn't know that if we, I didn't know that if we'd made the point that the village would have also some concerns or obviously some opportunity to weigh in on the portion of Aster Drive that's in the village.
Yeah, I don't think I, I don't think that spelled out specifically in the comments. I can certainly add that, um, they will have to be part of this eventually. We're right on the, the village line, so through part of the review process at some point, they would have to be, but certainly, I guess it's, it's worth documenting in the memo.
Okay, so I would, I would, um, I hope planning board members had a chance to at least scan Jim's comments, and I would open it up now for additional comments, those that we may have missed, or those that you particularly want to reinforce. Is there anyone who wishes to comment additionally?
I'd like to thank Jim for pulling that all together for us. I think it's, you know, from all comments we read, as they came in individually, I think he's done a very good job of pulling it all together to, uh, you know, first draft of a report that we'll be able to submit to the town board. And I guess the only question I have is when we get these referrals in terms of zoning amendments from the town board, we always recommend whether or not we feel it should be approved by the town board. I'm assuming and hoping we're going to be doing that with this one as well.
Yeah, I, I, I think that has to be part of the process, Michael.
So we, we have the opportunity to continue our discussion of this. Is that correct, Jim? We would still be within the, uh, time extension that we asked for?
Oh, if you want more time. Well, so, I, I, I maybe I read the, thought of it different. I thought Michael was asking about the overall process. So right now, we're.
Well, I, I was actually, yes, going to, I, I mean, I just wanted to frame that, should we wish to continue com- I'm not suggesting where we want to. Um, but, um, we're either at the position of continuing it, or we're at the position of saying we have made the comments we wish to make, and we, and we have the option to make a recommendation.
Right, yeah, exactly. So I, I will add one comment in there that I've heard tonight, that, you know, we want to ensure the village has input on this. Um, so I'll make sure to add that. Otherwise, yes, the comments is drafted, I guess I'd, I'd be asking if the planning board is, is good with those, with the one addition, and then, yeah, would like to make a recommendation at the end. I did not do that. I just consolidated the comments, right? So, um, that would be where we can go. But regarding policy, Michael, yes, so this is the referral right now. Um, it will go through the zoning kind of where they lay down the overlay on top. I assume that would get referred out as well. It'll come to the planning board, or it'll go back to county planning as well. And then, um, you know, there's also the formal submission to the planning board, uh, under site plan review, where the, the planning board would review it again, and that will also go to county planning again for an official review. At that point, so there, there are two official reviews. Right now, we're in the referral stage for the town, where there are two official reviews that I believe still have to happen. That's the zoning and the site plan, the official site. Uh, but I guess, yeah, yeah, back to your comment, your question, Melody, I guess, if everyone's okay with this, and someone wants to put out an idea of a, a recommendation, or a way to finish up the memo, since right now it's just a listing of comments, yeah, I mean, I think if we're ready, great. If not, yeah, we could conceivably wait till the next meeting without having to ask for another extension from the town board.
If I may, um, at the last meeting, there was a legal issue that was raised regarding, um, uh, whether or not this project complied with, uh, the town code, and there was going to be, uh, uh, some correspondence. Has that been flushed out, or is that still yet to be resolved?
Um, I, I'm not aware of any discussion. Um, I, I'm not aware of any discussions related to that camp, but I, I don't know. I can go back to the town board and ask, but I haven't been involved in any at this point.
Uh, it was with the planning board. There was a question whether or not the, the project complied with certain articles of, of the town code and there was going to be further uh, clarification. I'm just, uh, looking for clarification myself to see if we're by that issue.
Was it the code, Ken, or was it, um, some standards that are in the code? I was wondering, Michael, if it had to do with design standards, if that's what
That was one of the questions that I had that I think John was looking into is the role of the planning board in terms of site plan review. Once the planning board, as this is written, this resolution, it appears to me because of the completeness of it, that it basically approves the site plan as it is. And we've been told, or I've been told sort of off the cuff, I guess, that the planning board's role would just be to make sure all i's are dotted and all t's are crossed, but there really wouldn't be any cha- um, any opportunity for the planning board to alter or change or possibly deny the site plan. And, um, I think that's one reason why Jim encouraged us to, to the best of our ability, be very vigorous in terms of our review and comments through this referral process, which is why I've also asked that we be able to give a recommendation to the town board as to whether we believe this should go forward. Uh, and that's the question I think, uh, John was looking into. I think he mentioned it at that meeting we had the other day that he was looking into it, but I don't, I have not seen anything or heard anything back, uh, about any conclusions he's come to.
What I heard was if the planning board does not pass on a positive recommendation, what happens? Does, it, it, how was the project impacted? Um, does the project stop? Um, so I, it's a legal question and
We're strictly advisory. We're strictly advisory to the town board. They do not have to, uh, go by any recommendation that we make. In the past, we've made recommendations and they have chosen to go in the opposite direction. So our advisory advice is not binding on the town board, no matter what.
Right, not, not, not at this point in time. We do still have site, official site plan review that we have to go through. And that's where I think John is kind of looking to just make sure everyone is aware of how the process works.
Exactly. That's the area where I, I questioned whether we actually did have any real authority over the project.
Yeah, I, and don't misinterpret what I'm saying. Our goal here is, is to get, um, all of your, um, uh, support and approval. Um, and, and that's our goal. We will, uh, continue, uh, you know, to work towards that. I just, uh, thank you.
Yeah. So, so, so Michael's question is, is a procedural question. It's a legal question. One, obviously I'm not going to comment on, that's being done by John, but that, that is a question. I, I don't think that necessarily um, stops us from tonight. I, I did, you know, I have been pushing, as Michael said, hard for all comments to come in now so we can get them all up in upfront to the extent that, that we can under the, you know, the referral process we have in front of us. So, um, I mean, maybe I'll put out there, Michael kind of put it out there, you know? We've been talking about a recommendation and like I said, should, should it go forward? Do we have a recommendation? Um, does the planning board want to make a recommendation or would just like to advance comments as, as drafted?
Just, uh, just to be clear, clear, Jim, my legal question is about if this goes forward, what is the planning board's role? It does not in any way, shape or form impact tonight's decision or our next meeting's decision on a recommendation to the town board on this referral.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Sorry if I think about, yeah. Procedural related to your official site plan duties, I guess I'd say at the end of the process.
Yes.
Um, I think given the, um, the response from planning board members, um, many of whom sent in their comments in writing, um, suggests to me that there are some strong reservations about the app, about this proposal as it is presented to us at this time. I don't know how we could follow a, a path that we've taken in the pla- in the past, which would be to refer it back to the town and allow them to make their own decision. I think the, um, concerns that have been raised are significant enough that we need to, if we're going to do it tonight, adopt a resolution that asks the town, um, to take greater study and to take all of these comments that have been made into consideration. I don't think if this were, it's my own opinion, I don't think if this were before us as an application right now, an application to the planning board, that we'd be in a position to approve it. I think there are too many things that we found of concern. And I think my personal opinion is I'd like to, I would like to move those concerns onto the town board for their study and consideration. I'm not sure how I want to frame the resolution. I'm putting that out there as a place to start for discussion.
I guess
It's time to think about that myself. In other words, I would prefer not to put together a resolution tonight, uh, and wrote on it.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to perhaps take the time to go around and ask everybody their opinion. Michael, would you like to go next?
Sure. My, I guess I've made up my mind on it. As I look at it, for any number of reasons, I do not believe the town board should go forward with this project as it's been presented to us. I personally strongly do not believe that this property is an appropriate place for a complex such as this, which is going to be with young families, with children. I think there are too many constraints on the property. I think the entrances that are proposed, quite honestly, are dangerous, including the one on 308. Uh, part of that may be my experience where I live at the base of the hill on Slay Quarry Road, where I have literally have had hundreds of accidents and at least five fatalities in front of my property because of blind corners, people coming down hills and people trying to access the road without sightlines. Uh, I don't believe this is the proper property itself for a project of this sort. Uh, so that would be my view. It'll be my view at our next meeting. I, I fully understand Edna's concerns. She'd like to give it more thought and whatnot, and I think that's fine, too. We don't need to do it tonight.
Okay.
Oh, may I just clarify, uh, what I want more time to think about is the exact nature of the res- the resolution. In other words, the phrasing of the resolution.
Okay. We can certainly ask Jim to draft something for us, but I, I'd like to ask others on the planning board, um, to weigh in and offer comments if they'd like to. Craig?
Uh, yeah, I am, am very much interested in the town having, uh, a workforce housing project. I think it's very important. Uh, but I recognize, uh, from what Michael said and from what, uh, many of us who are on the site visit observed, it's a site with a lot of challenges and I feel that at present those challenges have not been adequately addressed. And I think that there are some, um, uh, provisions in the, uh, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, that need to be heated. And I, I don't think that there, uh, I don't think this project is rising to that, um, to that level where those, um, important provisions are addressed. So, um, I, uh, would encourage it to evolve. You know, I, I don't want to blow it out of the water because you never know what people are going to come up with, but I, you know, I think, um, we should, um, see how our questions are addressed by the applicant.
Others? Okay. Um,
If I may, Madam Chair, if, if we can have the opportunity, once the memo is, uh, is in final form or prior to final form, if we can have the opportunity to comment on, um, on the comments, uh, in the memo, would that be possible?
Certainly. I would, I would also stress that it, it does seem to me that the issue of access continues to be, um, an important one. And I think the question of where DOT comes down and where the town and the village come down, uh, I think we really need to make sure we understand that, you know, if indeed the village and the town are in, um, not in agreement with what DOT is requiring, and that's why I asked the question of request versus require, then that changes the ballgame for me. So, um, I think we need to continue to try to work to nail that down. Um, I'm sensing that, um, we wouldn't have an issue with, um, continuing this discussion at our next meeting. Would that be the very next meeting, Jim, or how would we fit within the extension deadline?
Uh, based on the current deadline, I think would have to be the next meeting, planning board meeting, the first one in July, which is, what was it, July, uh, 5th?
That's
Yeah, technically I think we have to have our comments of the board by the sixth, that, that Wednesday, but, um, yeah.
So do we need a motion to continue the discussion?
You know, motion, you could, or just agreement, general agreement, but it's a referral again.
This is, it's, it's a referral. It's not a public hearing. Do we, by consensus, agree? We would like to continue the discussion at the next meeting that we would ask Jim to, uh, develop some proposed language for possible resolutions, maybe a couple of them. Um, I would, if, if planning board members have, uh, thoughts or suggestions about the types of things they'd like to be included in the resolution, I would encourage you to, um, pass those on to Jim for his consideration. Uh, is everybody okay with that?
Sounds good, Melody.
Okay, um, so by consensus, I think we agree we're going to continue the discussion. And I thank everybody for their comments. There's still time if you haven't made comments, um, since we're continuing this to add them to Jim's notes. So if you didn't have a good chance to really look at everything jumbled together, um, please do so and either confirm or add to. So, um, thank you, Andy and Ken and everybody here from the applicant. We appreciate your time and your efforts and, um, perhaps, um, perhaps you can be, um, inquiring of the town board, what their intent is regarding forwarding onto the planning board, the revisions. So, you know, I mean, I appreciate and, and I can confirm that you did respond to what the, what we had asked for on site visits and it's there, but we have to depend on the referral from the town. Um, that being said, if there's no other business, which I don't think there is, I could entertain a motion to return.
Move.
So moved, Craig. Second?
Second, Joe.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, everybody enjoy the beginning of summer. Have a wonderful Fourth of July and we'll see you the day after.
Thank you.
Right.
Thanks very much.
Great. Before nine o'clock.